Stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yesterday, we started off with public comments. If anybody in the public would like to speak to the council, please come on down. Morning Glenn.
Good morning. My name is Glenn Brouvant. I live at 702 Lantana. I am on the Finance Committee, but I will tell you, I'm not speaking for the Finance Committee, so let's be sure about that. I'm speaking for myself as a taxpayer in the city. I've been here about nine years. And what information I relate to you is in the public records. You can find it. You can verify that. And those public records say this: The city's revenue, cost of operation over the last 10 years has been flat to down, with the exception of one major department. Unfortunately, it is the police department. Ten years back, the police department was absorbing around 34 percent of the budget. It is now absorbing 42 percent of the budget and going forward with this budget. I suspect it'll be consuming about 45 percent of the budget. The reality is, the city has gotten more and more dependent upon revenue coming off the utility companies, utility operations. And irrespective of what happens to the electric plant, the negative cash flow being forced on the city by the police department is no longer sustainable. The county taxpayers have said they're offended by the taxes we're passing on to them. When you look at the cost of running the police department versus the city overall, 10 years ago, the police department, 42 percent, 34 percent of the deal, 10 years later, 42 percent of the deal, the cost of running the police department has escalated from $56,000 a man to close to $90,000. So we've had about, it's about a 60 percent increase in the cost of running the department, just on the police department. Now if you factored those figures and go forward, three years out, the bill, the budgets are just not sustainable. They aren't. And mathematically, if you sit down and say, "Look at the real estate taxes coming in," and put a 10 percent figure on that, it won't match up with even a 3 percent increase in the police department's revenue costs. So the police department's costs are out of control. There isn't any doubt about it. It's the big elephant in the operation, and somehow, we're gonna have to look truthfully at the cost of running the police department. And I will tell you, I've looked at the plan for this year going forward about shifting the operation, the dispatch operation to the county. And I, for one, am opposed to that. I don't see that as saving a lot of money. In fact, I do think over the first year, it's gonna cost us money. Next, I think, it's almost a shift where seating control of 50 percent of our budget to somebody else. And more importantly, the first responsibility of the city is to provide for safety of its people. And we're gonna give that up by putting the dispatch someplace else. Over time, we'll probably never get that dispatch back. I think it's bad for the police department. It's bad for the city. And I think it impedes our ability to, long run, control the cost. Because I'm convinced you police officers love the city as much as anybody else does. You want the best for the city, and I think you're fighting hard to get that. But I think the reality is, the budgets are out of control. And it's your responsibility to figure out how to get back into control. I have suggested several times that you have an extremely good staff, well-educated, and you keep them well-educated. But we need to figure out how to disperse within that group some lower-cost people who holds your costs underlying, so your staff, 10 years out from now, continue to get the pay you want and continue to get the retirement program you want. I can tell you that what you're doing now is not sustainable, without doubt. Okay? Thank you. I'd be glad to answer. But if you want to see it, go to this year's records, published by an accountant, not the city staff. The accountants have verified it. So you can't dispute what's in the records. Okay?
Thank you Glenn. Anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? And your name and address for the record, please sir.
Yes. Damian Gilliam, 1623 US-1, Sebastian, Florida. First of all, I want to thank the staff, council, and the mayor for the hard work that you're doing here for your community. It's never an easy task, especially when it comes to budget time. I was concerned about the article that was brought in a paper this morning about the remark that was made that Vero Beach does not want to look like Melbourne or Sebastian. And I was kind of taken back by that. As a resident of Sebastian for 28 years, maybe there's something that we can learn from Vero Beach, and you can elaborate what we can do to fix that if there is an issue. I know that you have a large task ahead of yourself in trying to get your budget in order due to the fact that you have to unload the utilities. However, please be careful in not offending the other municipalities in this community. We try very hard. You're on the right track. Privatizing is always good. It reduces the taxes that the community pays. Once again, thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else who'd like to speak to the council? Okay, we open up today with the police.
Mr. Mayor, before we get to that, maybe we can sort of, I guess, rehash, discuss some of the issues of yesterday and one of the...
Cindy wants to.
Right.
Okay.
The question we were asked yesterday that we gathered some information for last night was, how many people actually use the city's cashier payment window, both the drive-thru window and the lobby? What you have are some statistics back through the last three or four years by month that show how much we receive in scannable and hand-key mailed-in payments, and then right there toward the middle, walk-in payments in the lobby and drive-in payments through the drive-thru.
Can you explain the difference between scanned-in mail and hand-keyed mail?
Absolutely, because that's something we're gonna try to focus in on regardless of the outcome of the cashier window. When we get payments back that have the payment stub with them essentially, then posting those includes scanning that stub to go with the check. When people make online bill payments, what happens is, we actually, instead of getting that bank-to-bank transfer we talked about, we get paper checks from other people's banks. And when those paper checks come, they don't come with the payment stubs. And so, that involves a process of matching up those checks, which may or may not have account numbers, with the accounts and handkeying them in. If we can, again, regardless of the outcome, we're gonna have this process improvement review with the bank. And if we can create true bank-to-bank transaction for those people that use Bank Bill Pay, we can eliminate tons of this handkey, because it'll be a direct deposit into our bank account and not a giant stack of scannable, you know, checks that we have to match up instead of scanning.
Is that something our banking services provider could smooth the process for us on this?
Absolutely. What they've offered to do is come and have a business process review, actually spend a couple of days in our cashier cage. The, what they call e-box service, that electronic capture of those bank-to-bank payments is something we've talked with them about back when we actually did the negotiations for the new contract. So...
Does this require an extra fee paid?
I don't think the fee is very large. They've got some other services that they've offered to like, give us the equipment and, you know, things like that. The real issue that held us up a little bit was that if we were going to replace the billing software, it didn't make a bunch of sense to create, because it has to play well with our general ledger. And so, now that we've kind of pushed that off a ways for various reasons, we've talked with them and we feel like it would be cost-effective to implement this now. And there isn't a huge redo in, you know, years down the road if we replace the billing system. So that, we're gonna, you know, as an efficiency, we're gonna try to gain regardless in terms of how we handle those things that come in through the mail. But kind of the surprise for us was, we have, as you can see by these statistics just for 2013, and they're pretty consistent, about 4,000 people a month that pay their bill by walking into the lobby, and about 3,000 people a month that pay their bill in the drive-thru window. And so, if you look at that against the net savings, you know, the savings overall, citywide, you know, come up in the neighborhood of $75,000, $80,000. But in the allocation of that function out to the other departments, the net effect on the general fund is $1,000, because those cashiers are allocated on the basis of how much cash handling they do relative to other funds. And the amount of actual cash and checks that we receive against general fund revenue is 1 percent of what we take in citywide. The bulk of the cash and check handling is in the utilities, and so, most of the cost of the cashiers gets costed out to them. Now, it doesn't mean the savings aren't there, but the savings are there for the electric utility, for water and sewer. The electric utility will benefit by, you know, $50,000, $60,000 a year, maybe another 12 in water sewer, and then the smaller funds like Airport Marina, another $1,000, $2,000. So, and I guess at the end of the day, the savings are there. They don't impact the general fund in any significant way, under $1,000. And it would affect about, you know, on a monthly basis, about 7,000 of our customers.
Our recommendation is, is that we would hold the customer service as it is today until we have the closing of the electric utility. And in order to try to continue to accommodate, the theory is, is when the electric utility goes away, the payments that will be received will be smaller in dollars, and therefore, telling someone that you can have, that you have to put in a drop box or any other way of mechanism of payment would be much easier than having with the electric, because that seems to be the driver right now.
Exactly. I mean, you know, I think if we can move toward more electronic payment solutions, and as Jim pointed out, have the people's water bills, solid waste bills are so much smaller, I really don't think that the people that, you know, wait till the afternoon it's due, et cetera, to come into the lobby or to the drive-thru are doing that because of that $40 portion of their bill. I think the electric utility's the real driver. So maybe it's something that we could, you know, continue to offer until such time as we don't have the electric utility, and then look at eliminating it then.
7,000 customers being affected is the issue.
I am quite surprised by these numbers. I have been visiting City Hall quite often the last three or four years. And based on an average of 4,000 walk-ins per month and 20, 21, 22 business days a month, are you saying that there are over 200 individuals each day parking in our parking lot and walking in that lobby?
And if you...
And another 150 or so a day driving through that drive-thru?
They've been keeping these stats for, you can see, like, three, four years. And, you know, it's really time-of-day dependent. If you go over there sort of late in the afternoon, you'll see quite a number of people in that lobby. I mean, they process them quickly, particularly through the drive-thru. There's actually two stations typically at the drive-thru. But, um, yeah, there's a large number of people that use this service.
I can say, I am opposed to continuing with this. I think it's time to go ahead and cut these costs. Otherwise, we're continuing to build up pensions, sick pay, other, all these other benefits, liabilities over this period of time. And it's, to me, 7,000 customers, maybe those could be county that aren't paying taxes. We need to go ahead and make the reduction.
Just a quick question. Are these people that are gonna be picked up by FPNL?
These are all of our customers. So yes, when they become FPNL customers...
The employees.
Oh, the employees, no.
The answer is, some of those would be, not all of them.
Actually, not in the finance department, in the customer service department. And these people are part of finance.
So their pensions and their liabilities will get picked up by FPNL?
No, these people will not.
They're in finance.
These are in finance. These people are not on the list to go to FPNL.
Okay. Well, I mean, I just do simple math and take 80,000 and divide it by the budget for the electric. And I mean, that's under 1 percent.
It's very small. It's probably $50,000, $55,000 of a benefit to the electric utility, probably in the neighborhood between 10 and 15 for the water sewer. So, you know, it is fairly small in relation to their budgets.
Well, the question is, is just do you want to irritate the customers or not? I don't think it's gonna make a big deal. Statistically, if you look at the last three years, the number of walk-ins has actually steadily increased. Not by much, but, you know, when you're running subscription businesses, one of the big things you gotta do is train your customers. And I don't think we've trained our customers to, you know, not do drive-bys and not do walk-ins.
I think too, you know, again, we've talked about this, and it takes time to implement it. But I think if we have a little more time to put in place some better electronic payment solutions for our customers in conjunction with moving toward eliminating this when we sell the electric utility, that will, by the time we get to that point, most of the customers we have remaining, we can get signed up for EFT, or, you know, bank-to-bank transfers, or a true web payment portal where they can go in and manage their own bill. And so, you know, I think you're right. I think it comes down to a small net impact to the part of our budget that's supported by taxes, 7,000 customers, and this is truly a customer amenity. And it does impact the rest of our operation, as we talked about yesterday. It'll require some changes in our payment processing, some additional involvement by customer service. But it, you know, I guess it's just a matter of, you're right. 7,000 people, how do you feel about that?
So we're gonna get those other methods online so that they can do that and get our customers transitioned before we cut it off?
I'd like to do that over the course of the next couple of years. The first one we can put in place in the next few months is this e-payment. That affects this scannable mail. That affects the stuff that's back of the house, and that's gonna be our first move. To put a web payment portal in place, again, although we've talked about it, the level of difficulty of that is so much smaller once we don't have the electric utility anymore. So our timing on those things is really geared around the sale of the electric utility. You go from 33,000 customers to 11, it becomes a much smaller thing to put in place. And so, we've sort of been holding off for that. You know, why do it and then either have to redo it, or why overdo it when we're, you know, approaching the sale? So...
Cindy, just an information question, really. Electronic funds transfer, how do you sign up for it now?
Actually, I believe, and I don't have my, you can ask customer service in here later, you actually have to physically come in and make that election with the customer service department. Fill out a piece of paper, put in your account number.
I didn't know that, and I'm not sure others didn't know that either.
Has that been listed, a set of instructions within the bills?
I believe it's, might be on the website, but certainly it's an option.
I think that what we need, if, I'm not sure what the vote will be, but if we vote to continue this customer service provision for the next year or a specific set of time period, I believe we need to have you all draft a set of steps on how we will phase out the need for customer service. And that could include various steps, like educating our customers on how to utilize EFT, perhaps adding a service fee for individuals that use the drive-thru or the walk-in in order to, you know, show the true cost of what it's taking for the employees to do that, as opposed to the electronic methods.
Right. And, you know, from where I came from, there were online payment portals and monetary incentives and things like that for both the electric and the water bills, which were two separate entities in the Keys. We've also been, our customer service people have had a fair amount of contact with FPNL, and certainly, they have a variety of methods for bill payment. So it's something that we're working on. But again, to put something complicated in place and then a very short time later, do away with 2/3 of the customer base, we're trying to work our timing out so that we don't duplicate effort. But, yeah, I agree with you. There are better ways to do it. I do want to make the distinction clear, though, that we're not talking about customer service. We're talking about that cashier window, and those are really two separate entities. But, yeah, again, it's entirely up to you guys.
Another concept could be if we did not take away the entire cashier department, but yet reduced the number of employees there with instituting immediately, perhaps, lower hours, a special fee for drive-through, something like that. I mean, there's other options. But of course, we're in the middle of budget hearings right now, and the time for those is now.
Or to bare minimum, eliminate the drive-in window. Get rid of our cashier there.
Because I do see that so many people are using the night drop. And is not the drive-in window the exact same service as the night drop, only they get a stamped receipt?
They come through after hours and use the night drop box. I will say, though, just from observation, you know, the drive-thru window, we actually have had more complaints about people who come to pay their bills in person cannot get the drive-thru window and therefore have to park in the parking lot and walk around. We, I mean, especially in the summertime, I will say that.
I'm sorry, what's the complaint about the drive-thru window?
If they can't use the drive-thru window, they're, I've seen more complaints about people having to park in the parking lot and walk in.
Well, could not the drop...
Older people, you know, that sort of thing, who getting out of the car and getting around and in, so...
Well, could not the drive-thru window have a drop box at it, and people could just drive through and drop their thing in at the drive-thru window?
It has a drop, it has a drop box.
Then, what's the complaint? We could just put a sign up there and say, "No one's available at the drive-thru. Just drop your check in."
I'm not advocating one way or the other particularly. I'm just telling you, you know, from experience, when, there have been times when the window hasn't been open for sick-wait days or coverage or whatever, and/or for half an hour. And those are the times I've actually gotten, personally received phone calls that have made it up the ladder that they had to park and walk around in the rain or the heat or whatever. But...
Some people you can't train. I see them at the bank, or the drive-up at the bank. They'll pull past it, get out of the car, come back, and do, I mean, some people you can't train.
But certainly limited, you know, limited hours. There's a variety of approaches we could take. It's kind of, it really is, this is truly a customer amenity and truly up to you in terms of whether, at what level you'd like to continue.
I can see reinstating it, but I want a deadline date for sure, drop dead that you're gonna cut it off. It's gonna be a culture shock. We need to probably phase it in.
Well, we have been...
What are you looking at for a phase in?
I will tell you this. We have been having conversations with FPNL about the billing transition and about several elements of the culture shock that are gonna take place when that transition happens. Certainly, if we target closing this window at the same time as we transition the billing to FPNL, then it'll be, how do I put this, a more natural progression and something that is more readily dealt with, because they have plans for a big customer education campaign prior to the transition. They do not have the ability, that I'm aware of, for you to go in person and pay a bill. So that would be the natural transition point. In the meantime, we could look to maybe a year of getting this part of it more under control and maybe lowering hours or, you know, limiting the timeframes.
What would the council like? Any comments?
Mayor, may I interject something? There was a question yesterday about whether or not we would have to take cash. And we have found nothing that would require the city to specifically accept cash payments. In fact, we did come across a statute that the legislature basically says, "They encourage local governments to make services more convenient to the public through the acceptance of payments by credit cards and other electronic fund transfers." So they want to encourage that. But we found nothing that says we have to take cash.
And what percentage of our, did you find out what percentage of the transactions through customer service are cash at this point?
I didn't, I know we have that data somewhere. I didn't gather it up.
Would, just a guess, estimate 5%?
I may have it in totals for the year. Hold on a second. No, because that will count checks too. No, I don't have that.
Mr. Mayor, comment. Doesn't help the general fund budget to close it. $1,000.
No, but it helps the head count in the city and the overall efficiency of the city.
Three of the people involved are part-timers. So when it comes to, you know, pension and some of those other concerns, they don't have, don't really have an impact on that. So it's one full-time person and three part-time people.
Is it possible we could just leave this alone and then six months, visit this when you've got something more substantial to show as far as what we can do about this?
Couldn't we always make a budget modification at that point?
You can, you can change anything at any point during the year that you'd like.
However, we have to determine the mileage rate in the next month or two.
This has a less than $1,000 impact to that. So that's certainly a decision you can put aside and let us work on this part of it. And...
I think what I'd like to see is to give you six months to come back with a plan to phase this in. I think we need to go ahead and move on this.
Is that a motion?
Before the sale of the electric utility?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So reinstate it for now and then a six-month plan for phasing it out?
Need to give you some time to work on a plan, just...
Anything else before we tease the chief and tell him you can start and then stop him again?
I think that pretty well covers it. We've, we're working on the changes you made on the revenue page and that kind of stuff. So we're putting all that together.
Good morning Chief. You have any opening comments?
Council members, yes, if I may.
Certainly.
I know the gentleman that spoke just briefly moments ago was referring to our budget. And we do understand that our budget is a large portion of the city's budget. But I want you to understand, and I submit to everyone today, that we're certainly not the white elephant. We're not the problem. We're a part of the solution. And we will be and continue to be part of the solution here in the city, because we're a proud organization. And I just want to also share a few historical numbers from this last 10 years. I understand the numbers. And I do know that, and we know that the, for one, pension contributions have increased over this period of 10 years that the cities had to contribute. As of right now, the 1213, it was, I believe, 859. That certainly wasn't the number back in '03, '04. So that's increased over the year.
It had been years where we had zero pension contribution, the police pension, because your pension had been run certainly more efficiently than the general employee's pension had been.
Yes ma'am, and that's...
And actually, to back you up, a very large part of that contribution, it's just like the general employee pension. It's an unfunded accrued liability, because they suffered the same hit in the market that we all did.
And that's what I'm referring to. And of course, that's not in our control. And as we all know, other items, as far as, for instance, health insurance is one that's out of our control. And for the most part, I think probably every year it's gone up, but at least it has, as a percentage over the last 10 years as well. So I just wanted to bring that to the forefront in that regard. And just to share a few other numbers before we get into our budget specifically for '13, '14. The, in 2003, '04, '05, our budget increased $633,000. Of course, we don't see those kind of increases any longer. That was due largely to salaries and operating costs. Over 200-some thousand just in salaries of that number. And from '04 to '05, the increase in our budget was $509,000. So you're talking a total of $1,143,000 in those two budget years. Again, those type of increases, we haven't seen in years. And I just wanted to bring that once again to the forefront as well. That's the front end of that 10-year period. And now I'd like to speak a little briefly about the back end, where we're more closely referring to. From '08, '09...
Can I just ask a question, sir? I'm sorry. In discussing the police pension contribution for this year that's proposed, Jim, what is the number of individuals that we have in the entire city of Vero Beach pension program?
It's about 400 and... Yeah, 400's a good round.
About 400 bodies that are still in that...
Active employees. I mean, there's retirees and...
I'm sorry. Let me rephrase the question. How many retirees are there right now we are supporting?
That information I don't have with me. I could go upstairs and get the valuation.
I thought it was somewhere around 150.
1200.
Yeah, I think...
And how many lives, how many, I'm sorry, individuals are we supporting through the police?
Oh wait, you know what? I do have those numbers. I have the caper with...
We have 52 sworn.
52. And yet, our contribution to the pension for 150 lives for next year is budgeted at $963,000. And for the 50 people in the police pension, we're budgeting 851. So all, very close to the same numbers for 50 people that are in the police, as opposed to 150 that are retirees of the city. That, to me, was unsustainable. I mean, that was shocking, that we are putting that much money out of the taxes and out of the generation of the city, just for those 50 people, the same amount that we're putting for 150 people and their families.
And actually, I do have the numbers here, because I do have the caper. The membership as of September 30th of 2012 in the general employee pension plan was actually 309 retirees, 379 active participants, and 95 people that had terminated but deferred retirement, for a total of 783. For the police officers, it's 39 retirees, four drop participants, two people that were terminated but not yet receiving benefits.
I'm sorry, wait a second. Let me write these numbers down. The numbers of retirees from the city of Vero Beach in the city pension plan?
The general employee pension plan is 309.
309 compared to 39 in the police department?
In the police department. The drop participants for the police department is four. There are none in the general employee pension plan.
Well, they're not getting a pension yet.
There are 95 people in the general employee pension plan who are entitled to benefits, but they've deferred them and are not currently receiving them, but they're still in the plan. And there's two of those for the police officers. And then the active plan participants in the general employee pension plan are 379, and in the police officers, 48. So the grand totals on those two plans are 783 for the general employee pension plan and 93 for the police officers.
But in terms of the, just the retirees, we have 309 retirees from the city, and we're budgeting $963,000, and 39 retirees of the police department, and we're budgeting $851,000 to their budget.
Well, also, keeping in mind the employee, the contributions for the general employee plan are spread across all the other funds as well. So you'd have to look at that total roll-up. I mean, it's 900 in the general fund, but those are not all general. The general employee pension plan includes both general fund employees, electric utility, water, sewer, solid waste... water, sewer, solid waste, so.
Wow. That's a lot of people. I mean, that's a lot of money for a little amount of people.
Go ahead, Chief.
Okay, and just further, from 08, 09 to this current budget, we've decreased our overall budget to $665,000. So again, from years back where we were having decreases, more recently, we, we have been working toward the decreases and doing what we've been asked to do, to come to some agreement here with, with the council and the city and to do the best we can for, for our budget. Just alone, last year with the last year, we decreased our budget 190,000. We also eliminated our briefing time. If you remember, I spoke about that last year, our briefing time with our dispatchers. We started our restructuring process by eliminating the deputy chief position. We also eliminated the substitute holiday that I know we spoke about.
Excuse me, Chief, is your mic on?
Yeah. We eliminated the, the substitute holiday and I want to share with you some information on that as well. That probably averages out to about $7,000, $8,000 a holiday with that elimination. So we're saving there and as you may see that in our overtime budget that the numbers are well there.
I'm sorry, did you say you reduced your budget last year from, from 1112?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm looking at 2011, 12 actual was 657 and 2012, 13 budget was 656. That's a reduce men of $1,500.
Right. I, I looked at the ledgers, the current, the ledgers we were going off of because of the, some of the booklets that we received at the time, the numbers weren't as accurate.
Is there, is there any difference?
I believe the budget was seven, seven, around that 71.
Is it with page 34?
No, I, I think that 1112 column is the audited actuals. And I think if you look above the line in the personnel expenses, there is about $100,000 reduction, but there was a, the shift looks like it was down below the line there. It went the other way. I'm trying to identify which of these line items and operating costs took it the other way, so. But yeah, overall, that was the actual, audited actuals from 2011, 12 versus the 1213 budget. It's about a $36,000, $30,000.
$36,000, okay.
Once more, we, we eliminated two civilian positions, which is the IT accreditation position last year and the records clerk position that has been on the books this year, but we haven't, we've held that vacant. We, we are intending to delete that position as well. We've reduced our fleet from five vehicles.
You mean by five vehicles?
Yes, by five vehicles. And additionally, once more, we're moving toward the restructuring of our rank.
Anybody like to start off?
I'll just make some observations if that's all right.
Sure.
The budget shows that you got 14 people that are, that you'll be getting rid of in total. If I do my math correctly, the 2012, 2013 budget shows an average of operating salaries about 49,000. The 2013, 2014 budget shows that an operating salary on an average of about 53,000. So what it really looks like is we're kind of cutting people off at the bottom, but then we're preserving everybody off at the top. And so we're getting rid of people, those 14 people with an average of $31,000 in salary.
And is that because the unions are requiring you to cut from the bottom only?
No, it's because the dispatchers are not compensated at the same rate as a police officer. So 10 of the 14 are dispatchers and then the other four are civilians. For example, the animal control officer is a civilian and they are not compensated at the same level as the police officers.
Okay.
So it, you're right at what you're saying, but the fact of the matter is, is you can't eliminate the 14 police officers and, and do what the plan was, was discussed.
When we were tasked with the 10.9%, what we did was the, again, 21 of our civilians, 10 of them are, are dispatchers. With the idea of not cutting any police officers, we had to look at our civilian population, if you will. And again, 10 of the offices, positions are communication, one animal control, one crime scene tech, one administrative assistant, and then again, that police records clerk that we intended on deleting anyway.
Well, the problem that I'm seeing and this, this really came to light when we started talking about the attorney's office, is that we get rid of like a clerical person, we cut from the bottom and then we have people that we pay a whole lot more money end up doing the jobs that we could pay somebody a whole lot less to do. And I don't know if, if that's what's going on here where we, we end up cutting a lot of the lower paid staff and then we have higher paid staff doing, you know, jobs that we could pay somebody a whole lot less to do.
Right. In, in the past, we had an administrative assistant in the operations bureau. We had one in the support services bureau and we had one in the detective division. We no longer have administrative assistants in any of those positions. They're in the records division now and we have two administrative assistants in the records and one records clerk specialist that's at the front desk. So all three are pitching in, doing a records clerk work, if you will. The administrative assistants being at a higher grade, they can work down, if you will, and, and, and we don't have to necessarily compensate them for that where if you have a clerk that you ask to do administrative assistant type duties, you'd have to compensate them. So we've, we've actually gone from nine positions to, to four overall in our records clerk area.
Do you think there's going to be a degradation of the higher-end services because of this?
No, I don't think so. If we can, if we can stay where, if we can stay with, with what we have now, I think we'll be fine.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
First of all, I just want to start with saying, hey, the police is the basic essential service of any city. I mean, we incorporate our cities because we want public safety. And I've, I've been very, very proud of the Vero Beach Police Force. I don't think, you know, a week goes by that I'm not out, out in the public and somebody says, yeah, you know, what a great job or what a special effort an officer had made to help them or whatever else.
Thank you.
We also have one of the most educated police forces in the whole state and I think it's something to be incredibly proud of that we have, you know, not only two-year degrees, but degree, college degrees and masters within our police department. My only issue is with this great educated, talented police force we have, why do we have not twice, but three times the amount of management in our police force?
Right. And, and we're working on that as we spoke last cycle to eliminate through attrition from six lieutenants to three, one captain. We have two captains now. We're going to move to one captain, three lieutenants and go from seven to six sergeants. We do have a few high-end officers in the drop plan that have maybe two, two years, a little more than two years left. So we are moving toward that and that, that is our plan. And of course, we eliminated the deputy chief position.
Thank you.
Do you have a timetable somewhere on, on a lot of these, the natural attrition schedule?
Well, we, as we spoke last year, talked about, you know, a period of seven, eight years for the, for the end, if you will. But we have, for instance, one of our captains is in the drop. He has, I think as of December, two years left. One of our sergeants is in the same boat. He has two years left as of December. Detective Jim Kelly, 30-year officer, just retired last week. He was a sick, his salary was in the low 60s as a 30-year employee. We'll replace him with a sworn position and of course, there'll be a savings there because that person won't start at that, that number.
Right.
And then, so, so we're moving forward as far as that goes.
But we are replacing him as giving someone else a promotion and a pay raise to come into his position instead of going back with Ms. Turner was saying and keeping less management?
Which, which position you refer?
Mr. Kelly?
Well, Jim Kelly's a police officer.
So he'll be replaced with the police officer.
Oh, I see.
In fact, in fact, what we did, Officer Feldman left a few weeks back to go to Tampa PD. He was a two-year officer and Jimmy retired last week and our one crime scene position's open right now. So we've actually frozen those three positions till October 1 and that will essentially help the payout for sick and annual from Jim, Jim Kelly. So that helps in that regard, but those positions are frozen. And well, again, with Jimmy, he's in the low 60s, not, not counting benefits. We'll hire a sworn position. He was a, he was a sworn officer. If you go to detective divisions, a lateral transfer. So he's a sworn police officer and we'll hire that officer, obviously at a, at a starting salary.
Chief Curry, having, I guess I'd like to open up this discussion on the dispatch.
Yes, ma'am.
I did speak with Chief Morris and Sebastian and when they went through an exercise of having the county handle their 911 calls and knowing the service level that we require in the City of Vero Beach and for the, what I consider a small savings of $215,000 in this year's budget for dispatch, I think we would be remiss in moving our dispatchers over to the county. I think it is an essential function and it's critical that the city retain that.
Do we have a head-to-head comparison of what the cost would, the savings would be of going through this process as well as what the cost would be to the county for providing that service for us?
Yes, I think we provided that information.
We, what we have is within the budget that's here, it reflects the reduction of the civilian positions. And if you look down about toward the top of page 34, middle page 34, you'll see Indian River County Sheriff Dispatch Services, a new line item. That's $345,000 contract for the operating part of them performing it.
How was that contract determined?
That's been a conversation between.
I can, I can explain all that and that's one of the reasons why our operating was up so much. The, the numbers that originally gave Cindy a few weeks back so she could meet her deadline to get the information to all of you, again, was the 345 for salaries. That was 10 employees. And then the number in the capital once in, I believe, is about 246.
Now, the 10 employees is geared in the fact that the sheriff, to manage the number of officers we would have on patrol, could not really reduce the number of dispatchers if we want the same call-response time.
So in other words, he would have to hire?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
He would have to hire additional dispatchers in order to keep.
For our 15,000 people, he would have to hire these. He couldn't, they couldn't absorb some of them.
No, and I've got updated numbers as of yesterday. This is an ongoing process. We've, we've formed a committee within our department and a committee with the sheriff's office. And let me say, the sheriff Lor and his staff have been gracious and very cooperative and helpful. But the number, there's two, there's two options. One is a shared radio frequency and that would be five call takers. And it's just that, a call taker is the person that receives the phone call. And if we just went with five of those, then the numbers initially would be 529,99350 for the first year. Then additionally, the second year would be 258,133. I don't understand.
There's 245 capital in.
The numbers have changed. They've gone up.
Oh, they've gone up. Well, thank you.
Why, why does it only take five for the sheriff to run and 10 for us?
I'm going to, I'm going to explain this to.
How many calls, if you go through this, tell us how many calls you get a day.
Joe wouldn't give him enough money.
Can I, let me just share this. I think it's important to understand the two options here. The shared option is five call takers, okay? If I'm a call taker, I receive the call as a, as a call taker. Now I'm going to give it to a dispatcher. A dispatcher has to give the call out. So as a call taker for representing Vero Beach, I will receive the call, but now I will give that call to a dispatcher from the sheriff's department. They're dispatching for their agency, our agency, the Indian River Shores in Felsmere. So as far as when our call will get out in a timely manner, I can't, I can't guarantee that. That's where it's a shared radio frequency. There's, we're basically sharing that. That's why the costs are a little less than this next option, which is the one we were working on. They're much higher. This is a dedicated radio. It's 10 employees. You have five call takers and you have five dispatchers. So in, in a sense, it's dedicated toward us as five takers receiving the calls given to dispatchers, to dispatch for Vero Beach PD, dedicated. And that's what we're.
I'm truly a data-driven person. I like data. Can you give me the data on the average of number of calls from the city residents, 15,000 of us, that call each day to 911?
I can.
I have it right here in the benchmarking list. It's 48,085 calls.
Oh, what, a month?
A year. A year.
That's the calls for service. That was a, I believe our 2012 was down some, around that 39, 40,000 mark of calls for service.
So about 40,000 a year?
Forty-eight.
Almost 50.
Fifty.
That was the 10, 10, 2010 information?
Yeah, this was, yeah.
That was when we.
1011, 1011 exercise, chief.
Well, the, the first year dedicated.
138 a day or 140 a day.
Yeah, 100, 100, 150, between 100 and 150 a day.
Right.
People call 911 from our 15,000 residents.
Well, 911 or general line. It's not just.
That's, that's any calls into the police station as well. And you're still going to be answering the police department calls, but that, that's not the 911 calls. I'd, I'd like the number of the 911 calls.
I can get that for you. I don't have it.
Because I don't think that's, I don't think there's 150 people calling a day 911, is there?
Not 911, no.
But these five people, that's, are there five shift rotations, David, or what? In other words, you have.
One per shift.
One, so you have one dispatcher, one call taker per shift, correct? Is that right?
Well, we, we have, right, we have two per shift and it's, it's, it's a call taker and a dispatcher. And that's what you'd have here. You'd pretty much have there what we have now. But let me give you the number on the dedicated, and this is broken down into salaries. The 10 individuals would, the salary cost is 416, 416,073 a year for the dedicated. Going back to the shared, it's half of that basically because you're talking five employees. Now you're moving to 10. But the dedicated radio, if we want the same type service, the first year number is 779,258 and then the reoccurring call second year is 475,263.
What does it cost us now?
Can you, can you clarify this for me? The first year number includes that capital again, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Does the first year number include the capital again?
Yes.
So the ongoing, the ongoing cost that goes into this, this budget right here as compared to the 345 we had is now 475?
Correct.
The actual total cost for last year in, in this part of the budget, let's put the capital aside, is about $560,000.
Right, that's what I have.
So essentially, what I'm hear you, hear you saying is with the first option, which is about 416 a year, which is reduced service, it's a, a little bit of a net savings, but with an apples-to-apples service, it's actually more expensive.
We'd have to change.
Well, it's still a small savings, maybe 80.
We'd have to change our radio frequency in our cars. That's so much a car. We have a couple firewalls. There's a couple more and we, we don't have the numbers from, from John King from Emergency Management Services, which is with regard to 911 landlines here in the city being switched over. So that's a figure we don't have either.
So capital, capital investment aside, on an ongoing basis, it costs us 560,000 for the operational part and an apples-to-apples comparable service is essentially 475,000. So the net savings is, is even smaller, it's even smaller than what we talked about.
And if you look at the sheets, I don't know whether David or Jim did it, about the not having a 911 dispatch center, I mean, it's, it's not worth talking about.
I ask one more question. When you approached the county, whether it was John King or Daryl, and asked them to provide a bid of what it would cost for them to take over the service, did you do it one of two ways? Did you ask them to provide equivalent services, meaning those 10 employees we have now? Or did you ask them to take a look at what the numbers were of 911 calls and determine what that fee, based on county numbers, it would cost, or the equivalent number of employees for the number of calls? Which did you ask?
I met with Sheriff Lor and under Sheriff Spencer and I gave him our calls for service and some of our data. And then asked him about if they could assist us in coming up with a number for dispatching. We convened a committee from our end, which is our IT, Captain Touchberry from our end as well, Carrie Ryan, and some others. And they had a committee similar from there. They both worked on, because the key after the salaries, as you can imagine, was the, the hardware and the software and the switching over and the connectivity and records management and field reporting. And I mean, there's a number of things that you may not even think of, and we were trying to think of everything. And that's why the numbers are evolving as, as they are.
But based on our call volume, they determined the ten people?
Correct.
Actually, they could get by with less people.
Right.
But five people.
Right.
They could get by with shared if that's what we wanted to do.
But that, that impacts the service delivery.
I understand.
Right.
Can we move forward with this?
I was going to make a motion to retain the call center.
I'll second it.
I don't believe, I think it's false economy, and I want to maintain that, that level of service for the city. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor of keeping the call center?
Aye.
Thank you. One more thing to your benchmarking, council member. I know that the, just to give you an idea, and I think it's 2012 fiscal year for Tocco Beach, one of our benchmarks, for their communications division, they have the same numbers we do as far as personnel, 650,2,780 for their budget alone. And there, and I mentioned it before, their budget's separate. So when you look at their police department budget, you see the police department budget, and then you have to look at the communications budget that dispatches for their police, but it is separate.
I'm not saying that they wouldn't do a good job, but I want the level of service that we currently have here. And we would not be able to control those costs whatsoever over there.
That is correct. What you, relentless service, I don't, it's very difficult to get it back.
Yep.
Thank you.
I know it's really an odd thing for me to do, once again, to be asking to add something to our budgets, because I really, really trying not to be doing that. But I would like council to please consider the addition of the 4700 for the DARE program. If you have not participated in these educational programs, it is vital to get to these kids at a young age and to try to tell them the dangers, the harm of drugs and abuse, and to help them handle their peer pressure.
You say one is worth more than four.
It absolutely is, and the cost of trying to take care of these later on. And our staff, they have just done an incredible job with that program, and I'd like to, it's a small cost.
Can you state that in a motion?
Also, we've lost, well, I would second that.
I'll second.
For, for discussion, I would like to say that we have lost two schools within our city limits over the last few years. So there are less children that we're actually getting in front of. And that's unfortunate with, you know, two entire schools left the city limits. However, I would definitely think that this is an important thing to go forward. I don't know if you guys are fighting over microphones over there.
No, no, I, no, I, all I wanted to say is I've been to a number of these, probably four or five. And, and to me, you have a bunch of, what are they, fifth graders?
Fifth graders.
Fifth graders. And they all come up and, and, and for a little bit of money, just their exposure to the police earlier in their life, that this is an important element of the community. I mean, forget anything else.
That and the Neighborhood Watch are two very good outreach programs that can, we can prove success in both of those that I think are important for us to retain.
The, the 47 includes, it's three for DARE and the 1700 for Crime Prevention, which allows us to do the rad kids and rad women's. And I believe actually there's a course going on this week with John Morrison, and that's where he puts on the red man suit for the, for the young children. And we do it during summer break and throughout the year as far as how to protect yourself and to, it's called resist aggression defensively.
I'm gonna check with Officer Morrison. Yeah, he promised to tell me when that class was going out for the women, because I thought, yeah. And Ms. Carroll may want to join it.
We will. We do that at Longevity Lady now, actually, for, for that as well.
Do we, chief, we still do have some money in, in the escrow too for DARE, correct?
Yes, yes.
So we actually have some funds through donations that are escrowed to be spent specifically on DARE. And certainly, if we put that back in the budget, we can supplement it with some revenue from the money.
We generally go right to that 3,000 with the, you know, the booklets and the information and the shirts and the graduation material. Bill in Thelma Durie years ago, a local couple would donate the cake and the pizza during the DARE graduation. They've gotten up in the age and weren't able to do that. So the last couple of years, we've used just that. We've used our DARE escrow to fund the party because we, we don't have it in the DARE account. But you're right, council member, Carol, with, with the less schools, it's helped us out in a sense because, as you may know, and I think I've mentioned it, we, we place an officer at all of our elementaries, including St. Helens, at bus drop-off and bus pickup every school day since the incident in Connecticut. And we also do, the officers that work those areas will get out and do walkthroughs. And that's been very, very well received from the principals that I've spoken to and gotten feedback and the parents as well.
It's good to know the public know that you are providing that security for the families in our community.
Yes.
Let's call a motion and go on.
All in favor retaining the call center?
This is the DARE program.
The DARE program, sure.
Aye.
All in favor, passes unanimously. Cindy, up on page thirty-four.
Sorry, I thought we talked about the crime prevention program as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually a separate line item. So we do need to make a motion for that if you would like to do that.
Crime, crime prevention line item also, 1,700. Move to retain that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cindy, on page thirty-four, up under pension contributions, where it dropped 72%, is this gonna change that back?
Based on the change in assumption, exactly. That's the general employee pension contribution, not the police pan, and that will go back because of the assumption that we changed yesterday.
We do have, and I spoke to Cindy about it, we do have a operating cost that will have to go back with the dispatch. It's about 15,000 to 19,000. I have it marked down. Some of our operating costs that, of course, we need year in and year out for dispatch, maintenance and what have you, that we did take out in case, you know, we were gonna go elsewhere. But now that we are gonna retain, that needs to be retained as well.
Essentially, this budget for the, the vote to put back the dispatch, this budget as it stands will go up about 215,000. That was the net as it stood right here.
Okay. And chief, I would encourage you to look at the ten people, because if the sheriff's department can do it for five, there's something, something wrong there.
Well, again, the, the five is, is shared and it's just call takers. So again, I'm taking the call and I'm giving it to one of the sheriff's dispatchers to give the call out. So again, they're dispatching for their own, for Felsmere, for Indian River Shores, and for us, if that's the case.
Do you have anything else, chief?
No, sir.
The animal control officer, I think we do need to briefly discuss that because that's gonna be a change in service level. Right now, we respond if somebody calls us and says there's a python in their backyard, or if there's a bobcat running through the neighborhood or whatever. By elimination of our animal control officer, the county responds to cats and dogs, and I think the chief has looked into that.
Yeah, we, we provide a pretty good service, not only educating the community, responding to assist the county for exotic animals and everything other than animals, cats and dogs. They, they simply respond to cats and dogs. We trap, we respond cats and dogs, bobcats, snakes, raccoons, possums, what have you. We actually have a signed agreement, and I have a copy of it here somewhere, I think it was '06, where we are a part of the, the rabies, we deal with rabies that's involved with the county through the health department. And that's agreement for us to be a part of, only us. Of course, we can get out of that, but we're, we're very involved in the animal aspect. And I even read something recently where ICMA considers it an essential service, animal control, because of the people being bit and the different animals and trying to control your population of strays and things like that.
What is the cost of Rodney? What's his overhead? What do we, the, the animal control?
His salary is 36,733. From my understanding, the, the employees over there literally make double that and do, and no disrespect, do less.
I'm sorry, the employees of where?
The county animal control.
Well, when Rodney gets a call for a python or something, it makes his day.
However, is his time spent 100% on these services within the city limits of the city of Vera Beach?
I, I would say yes.
100% of the time, he's out there catching animals.
That's what he does. I can give you information on that. The, you would, I don't know, you'd probably be surprised the amount of animal cost we get per day.
I, I am surprised because last summer, I called and with possums in my backyard, and I was told that it wasn't a service provided by the city and to call the county. I called the county and they said it wasn't a service, call a private tracker, which is what I did. Even though that I had thought that the city provided the service, I was told that it did not.
We do, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I apologize for that. I don't know why you were told that. Back when I was a patrol officer, we used to do it as well. It's been a service we've been providing for a number of years.
Rodney came and got a possum out of my yard. It had five little babies hanging on its back.
But we did not recognize your name either.
Well, I, I wonder, I wonder, because I had five possums trapped in the backyard and had to pay the private, private company for doing that.
Gladly.
Salary and benefits, the animal control is about 50,000.
My possums eat the mangoes that come off the tree. I have a lot of possums, dozens.
Do they get stung by your bees?
Uh, no, they don't.
Okay.
And again, just like some of these other services, you can, if, if you do have a concern, and, and you can certainly give me a call, but, you know, or City Manager, Mr. O'Connor, can call me, and we can immediately look at your concern where if you have to call another agency to do something, then you're, you know, you may have a delay in time. You may not get the service that you're looking for because, again, they're, they're throughout the county and it's just dogs and cats.
Right. And I will say, we are the only city within the county that has animal control. Sebastian does not, or at Indian River Shores, Felsmere. No other city sees a need to have an animal control officer.
And we are, I believe, the most urban city.
Just a quick question. The animal control out of the county, is that paid out MSTU or is that other general fund?
I believe it's general fund.
I believe it is.
I had some...
I don't think there's an MTS.
But it's just dogs and cats.
No possums, okay.
No possums.
So what, what is your wish here, council? You wanna maintain Mr. Dangerfield or you wanna...
I do.
Release, you wanna retain him? You wanna make that as a motion?
I'll retain the animal control, make that as a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Sure, I'll second.
All in favor of retaining Mr. Dangerfield?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Dangerfield is...
His position, not Mr. Dangerfield.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Animal control.
Is reinstated or...
No, no, it did not pass.
It did not.
We're out of the animal control business October the first.
Okay. We have the, the administrative assistant position, if we can speak about that.
Sure, go ahead.
As I mentioned earlier, the police records clerk, that's, I don't know if you have a copy of some of my paperwork, but we've had a police records clerk position that's funded, but we hadn't filled it this whole year. And our intention was to look at what we were, we are reorganizing with our clerks within and the jobs that they're doing to see if we were able to maybe delete this police records clerk, and I think we can do that. So that's another civilian position that, again, was funded, but we hadn't filled it this year and we will, we won't fill it. But I would really like to retain this administrative assistant because, again, we've, we've basically pulled together. I know some of your concerns was cross-training and working together and doing, and, and we're just, we're the model of that with that. We've got girl, our clerks, if you will, you know, doing sorting traffic reports, crash reports, offense reports, entering the data, front desk, they rotate through. I even have my secretary helping out with warnings and tow rotations, and our purchasing agent is, is helping out with our UCR, the Uniform Crime Report that has to be delivered twice, twice a year. We have someone that does that. We have someone that does payroll. So they're really pitching in, and they've cross-trained. And, and I can even say not happily, in a sense, sometimes, because when you're an administrative assistant and you're asked to do some clerical work, you know, that's not what you're used to doing. But they, they have, they have pitched in and worked together. And we've, we've reorganized our three, our two administrative assistants, our specialists, our clerk specialists at the front desk, they're all within our records department now. We, again, don't have, we do not have an administrative assistant in the captain's office over support or operations or in the detective division. They're, they're assisting them as well when they can or need to, but they're not in those positions anymore.
And as you wish you luck continuing to cross-train and to challenge your employees. I mean, obviously, a purchasing agent is not working full-time at the, I mean, at the police. So I commend that you're having your purchasing agent, you know, fill in and doing many other tasks. And I think we need to continue along that vein.
We are, and, and we showed some information. I think I have that in my booklet with even the purchasing, purchasing agent, excuse me, how, how many invoices and, and, you know, we process quite a bit just the police department as far as that goes. So she's busy. She also does the public records, archives and things like that and orders items. So they're all pitching in. They really are.
Any other comments from council?
On the police in general or...
Yes.
I, I have a general comment. I, I think David has said it well. But I, I do think we are top-heavy, and I do think the police cost more than I would like. I thought about this in prior sessions when we were talking about the pension and so on. And I guess where we are to summarize, and I think David said it, is that as time goes on, we become less top-heavy, and that's what we're relying on. I believe that's accurate, is it not, David?
Yes, sir.
And I, I, after the comments made this morning and the comments made yesterday and previously, I thought about it, and I really have no better solution than that as a solution. So it is what it is. And it is top-heavy. Over time, we need to be dedicated to be sure that it's less top-heavy.
Just to come to, I guess, Chief Curry's defense. I mean, it obviously is a structure that he inherited, you know, that was developed over many, many years. When we, last year, when we were in budgets and we tried to make an effort to reduce the number of lieutenants or sergeants. I mean, we all quite recall the backlash that we received from the public. Although we were not reducing patrolmen on the street. So, yeah, I think he's done the best he can within those limits.
I totally agree with you, Mrs. Turner. I really do.
Also, we built our union contracts around the formation that we would be eliminating the middle management positions. So David was instrumental in that part as well.
So many of these positions are, as you mentioned, unionized. Even our dispatchers and our clerks are in the clerical technical that was recently established within last year as well, the Teefster Union.
And, and, and again, I, I want to recognize you for the hard work you put in, and we really appreciate that. You came into a, a structure that was already created. And the requirements of the unions and the requirements of your job are that, you know, we can't easily, you know, correct the wrongs that were made in terms of, or, I don't want to say wrongs, but correct what has, what occurred in the years before you. I mean, you were not, we did not have this city manager. We had a city manager who was promoted from the police department and made a lot of promotions during that time period that was based on his own decisions. And the top-heavy type of structure that we have now could be considered a result of that. And we appreciate the fact that you're looking forward and recognizing what we as a, as a council and what we as a city need to do to correct that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think that'll do it, chief.
We've got a crime scene position, if we can spend a minute or two.
Talk about that?
May we?
Sure.
We, that, that position, again, right now, we have a sergeant that's over crime scene. And with the elimination of a sergeant, that sergeant, that position will go away. We feel that their supervisors, of course, the core that is on the road, the patrol, but the, that supervisory position won't be needed if we go from, when we go from seven to six over crime scene. So that would leave us with two crime scene from three, because the sergeant, again, does do crime scene work and what have you. So it would, we would really like to keep our two civilian crime scene technicians. Again, right now, we have the one and the sergeant. We had one that, that we had to let go during probation, and that's, that's that position I referred to earlier where we have frozen that position till October 1 to help out with the budget. But I would like, come October 1, I would like to replace that. We have some information here. I think it's in the, the proposed cuts information. But the, the workload that we have, for instance, we, 995 latent print comparisons in just 2012. The, we have to worry about on-call, having a crime scene tech that works the afternoons or evenings. That person generally is on-call. And if there's only one of them and they're constantly on-call, that could prove to be very difficult, having that person work all day or work all evening, then come out and, and take call. So with two, we were able to rotate that. Again, we do fingerprint comparisons. So if we have crime scene, crime scenes that we develop a print on, we can, we have people that can compare that. If we don't have those, those people in there, then we have to send it to the sheriff's department or another agency to do a comparison on a, on a print. And again, there's time delays there as well. The crime lab, on-scene processing, in-house processing, a lot of the, the items we, we collect from scenes, of course, we bag and collect, we'll bring inside, and then we still have to process them. So there's a lot of in-house processing along with responding to our crime scenes. So we would really like to, and we don't feel that that's too much to keep two crime scenes.
Let me ask the question. With our highly educated police force, aren't the officers taking these type of classes on fingerprint analysis and, and things like that? And cannot they help out with these types of services instead of civilians?
Well, we do. And not with the fingerprint comparison. That's a, that's a...
Isn't that computerized?
That, no, that's with the, the I, and there's schools... No, that's with the eye, and there's schooling there with regard to that. Our officers don't compare fingerprint.
We don't have a computerized service that does that?
Not. We have, we have, you may be, we have a live-skinned fingerprint, where if the public comes in, we do the prints non-paper now. That's to take prints. I'm talking about comparing a print. If you have a known print of a suspect and you take a print from a scene, you're going to compare that. That's a skill that not everyone, not all crime scene techs even have, let alone...
So CSI on television, you can't just feed it into the computer and get a match?
If I can get you a number for that, we can plug it into the budget.
Hey, David, let me ask you this question. I think what you said, I'm just trying to understand what you said, I think what you said was that you have a sergeant retiring, and therefore you need this position to replace it. Is that what you said, or did I get that wrong?
Well, we currently have seven sergeants, and part of their plan is to go to six.
Right.
And for instance, one of our sergeants, if one doesn't go sooner, or, you know, we have one in the drop. So when he leaves, we won't fill that sergeant's position.
We will patrol, we will fill it with a patrol.
I understand. And the crime scene supervisor is an area that we feel that we don't need the supervisor. So we'll have six supervisors, four of them will be in patrol, one will be in the detective division, then we have one that will probably be in support for training and accreditation and things like that. So we try to prioritize, with six instead of seven, now we have to prioritize where we need our sergeants and where they fit the best for us. And we feel that that position, as of right now, is where we'll take it from, a crime scene sergeant.
So what I said is correct, is it not, to summarize it? In other words, you'll have one last sergeant.
Right, we will.
You'll replace them with a patrolman.
Correct.
But you need this function to replace, you no longer have a sergeant. How expensive are these crime scene technicians?
But this is a civilian.
They're civilians.
How expensive?
Yeah. Their salaries at the 28,000 mark, 30,000 mark.
About 33,000 with benefits and loaded.
Thank you.
How many crime scenes annually are we talking about at the City of Vera Beach, Chief?
Well, and that's a good question, and our officers do process scenes, I wanted to make sure that's clear.
Right, I was going to go back to that.
They don't compare prints.
Okay, but we have our, they're all trained to do this. That's why they're the most highly educated police force in the area. They've taken these classes.
That's part of why they are, yes. Yeah, if I go out to a scene as a patrol officer, and it's a scene that I can process on my own without having to call out a crime scene tech to pay overtime, then we do that. If it's a large scene that needs a lot of processing, a little more expertise, some more time, then that's when our crime scene tech either comes out when they're working or overtime. But we try to stress, and we've done a good job, we feel, where the officers are processing some of their own scenes, if they're smaller scenes, you know, a break into a vehicle, you know, maybe a small burglary that's isolated to one portion of the home, that kind of thing. So they do process, without question. Now, we, in 2012, the numbers, again, we had, I was given that, and I believe we had 52 actual crime scene call that we responded to, but again, that's, that number isn't, that's for crime scene. We also processed a lot on our own as well.
What is the pleasure of the council? Do you want to fund this position or not? You want to make that as a motion?
You don't need to, if you continue on the budget, unless you're going to change and add the position back, because it has been on there.
It's already gone. Okay, I leave it as it is. Jay, you have any?
Just real quick. Cindy, do you have a tally of where we're at as for the 20, with the changes that we've made?
I think she'll be making all that Thursday night for us, right? Okay.
Well, I'm just worried, are we in plus or minus?
Well, with the big, we're still plus. With the big assumption that we made that we were not going to assume the sale of the electric utility on April 1, we went back on that attachment B to a place where we had about $591,000 surplus. So now we've been using that up with what I have so far, 25K for Main Street, 20 for Holiday Lights, no more than 40 for the mailroom attendant, because that's actually costed out, so that'd be worst case, 215 for dispatch, another seven for DARE and Crime Prevention, and we're down to about $300,000 left, to the good. Now, it would be my, I'll keep this kind of running tally, I mean, obviously, these are round. We do have one unknown in the general insurance category, as we get the quotes from our providers and try to move toward more fully insured to alleviate litigation, so I'd like to have, you know, maybe a little bit of a cushion there so that we could absorb that when we get those numbers for August, but that's where you stand right now.
Okay, we're going to leave the crime scene as it is.
Yeah, you are, but before you leave that, and it was a very interesting, Tracy, that you came up, you know, is it like it is on TV? We have a crime lab that's located in Fort Pierce, and if you want to give the chief a call, I'm sure that he could make arrangements for you to go down and visit. It really is a remarkable lab that is in our area that we use, and we pay, we pay a cost.
Where is that on the budget?
It's actually a line on...
Other contractual services?
Indian River Crime Lab.
Indian River Crime Lab, okay.
It's got a separate line there.
The, I believe it's 57667, and when we, that did not go up this year, and that was primarily because of the municipalities.
Is that just a straight fee we pay, or is that based on usage?
That's based on our population and our submissions.
Okay, so we pay a straight fee?
Yes.
We also have a position on that board that helps develop the budget, and so David sits as our representative on that, so he has input into the management and control. But it is a very good facility for you to go visit if you wish to do so.
And which municipalities in our counties utilize that?
The three, the four county areas, but are you referring to Fort Pierce, Fort St. Lucie, Sebastian, Villa Beach?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it's Stewart, Martin.
Right. Martin County, St. Lucie County Sheriff, Indian River County Sheriff.
St. Lucie County Sheriff is the overseer, but the realities are the funding sources come from the variety of those who use the service.
They actually suggested a small increase, and we voted to keep it flat this time around.
Okay, thanks, David.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Would anyone like to take a 10-minute break?